Would never, you know, eight, ten dollars before this year, I think it's a
Forty dollar deposit.
Yeah, deposit and then we'll get it back if there's no damage.
Oh, perfect, okay. I make a motion to approve the Keno grant for the Plainview.
Second.
Green.
Hi.
Tyler.
Jody.
Hi.
Brian.
Hi.
Okay, second up is the Plainview post prom Keno grant for the hipnose, no, hipnast test for eighteen hundred dollars.
Alyssa from would have been here tonight, she's one who, pretty young, but wrestling got moved tonight to Albion, so I said I was coming anyway, so I would just kind of represent, you know, post prom is a night to keep our kids safe and not trying to have them head out of town and do things that they're not supposed to, it's fully donated from the, from the food, to the entertainment, to the prizes, to everything, so.
My question's, are you going to have him doing at the beginning of post prom or at the end?
Um, last year we did it at the end, um, I don't know if the committee has fully decided, we're gonna have, we had some games last year also for about an hour and then did the hipn- hipnast test and then we served breakfast last year, so they kids didn't leave town.
Does he stay, does that, does he stay overnight then?
Um, last year he saved, he shared the night with Tilden, so he started in Tilden and then came to us and so it really worked well, but he did not stay, I don't think. Not that I can remember, but I'm not one hundred percent.
And he still comes from Melcorn, yes, that's what his paper says, comes from Melcorn. So, it, when I first looked at it, I thought, my gosh, eighteen hundred dollars for one man to come for thirty, ninety minutes, turns out to be four dollars and twenty-nine cents a minute, kind of a, you better be listening to him. But I think you have to consider the amount of drive time, two and a half hours, two in front is five, if he is there for an hour and a half, give him a half hour to set up, puts you right at seven hours, so it's getting better and more reasonable looking. The question is, go.
Well, my question is, I didn't see any matching funds.
I guess, because I just got this last night, I, and then I said, well, I've done it before for the Keno grant, you know, we will be doing everything else in, um, raising the funds and things like that, but I guess whatever amount that you guys would give, we would have to match the rest to be able to get them. I know our, um, funds are a little bit less than normal, uh, we don't have as active committees this year participating in raising funds, um, and our basketball taco night has been snowed out four times, so I'm hoping for Thursday night again, otherwise we're having a burrito party at my house, I guess, I don't know, so. And it's just hard, every, every group needs to raise money in the school and JPP and dance crew and this and that, and it's just hard. And it's harder because we go to the businesses, we'll write a letter for them for donations, for prizes, and there's just not as many businesses in Plainview or to buy, we try to buy local links if we can, we're not sure we've got all the gift certificates or gift cards from the pharmacy and things like that.
Nobody's come and asked me yet for a donation, by the way.
The letters haven't gone out yet, they're, we just had a meeting on, what, Sunday, Tuesday? Sunday, yeah, Sunday night, so they're just working on that letter.
Well, I guess I make a motion to give a thousand dollars worth of Keno money, and then I would hope they would be able to come up with partial of it on their own.
Second.
I'll second.
Do you have a figure of how much is in the Keno?
It's ninety-two, ninety-three dollars.
Breaking down.
We have dueling pianos there for something, there's like over four.
That hasn't paid out yet, so. And we'll get the quarterly check. And we'll get the quarterly check.
What are the parents on to?
We got money.
Okay, Tyler.
I did this.
Green.
Hi.
Jody.
Hi.
Brian.
Hi.
Okay, motion passes.
Can you tell me what, how much it is?
A thousand dollars.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Third Keno grant is the city of Plainview demolition costs for one twelve South Elm Street, uh, an amount of fifteen thousand dollars.
Yep, and obviously we don't have all the exact coming in, we don't know how much waste it's up for N B, but hopefully that'll cover our project, next time I guess I'll see what comes around.
Possibility could be some of that.
Yep, and we don't use it all if it doesn't, if things come in cheaper, um, of course, we've seen the basement, about now that is full of.
Jamet's too.
Walk down there.
Good thing we got some new equipment, is that what you're saying? Good dad.
It'll, it'll be a big ass elevator sitting there.
I'd like a motion to approve the Keno grant for fifteen grand for demolition costs at one twelve South Elm Street.
Second.
I'll second that motion.
Okay. Brian.
Hi.
Jody.
Hi.
Green.
Hi.
Tyler.
Hi.
Number nine, discussion action, resolution number six sixty-two.
You want to hand that now?
Installation of speed limit signs on West Street, south of Locust Avenue.
Jeremy was good enough to give me a heads up that, yes, we needed to do something, of course, you're asking me to read your minds and create the resolution to say what you're going to say here. So you have a resolution with some blanks in it, but we can say we have a speed limit sign for a certain speed at a certain location or two of them or whatever you would like to do.
Christie, what is the speed limit there, twenty-five?
Twenty-five, it's thirty-five coming off of, uh, Highway thirteen northbound until you hit city limits, hit city limits is twenty-five. Um, I would think that people would know that, but they don't, um, so when I requested that the stop sign come down, I should have also requested that a speed limit sign go up. I did make a, I made one stop there since the speed limits or the stop signs have been down and, um, she was not aware that the speed limit was twenty-five, well, she was well within city limits doing that, so, um, I could have written a citation, however, she could have thought it said there's no posted speed limit, so I think that we need to, we need to put one up, it's right there at the end, you know, that where N B is, it's where the train tra- where the city limits, city limits is, so.
Interesting, some people that are used to stopping still stop with the stop signs there.
Which shocks me because they stop more now than they ever did, and I'm like, no, keep going, but, anyway, that's, that's why.
Still a good idea though.
Yeah.
So, one sign for northbound traffic located something like that is what you're looking for, number one. Twenty-five mile an hour sign for northbound traffic located at the city limits.
Yeah, so one, yeah.
Yeah, yes.
Well, that's one, you want one and then for southbound traffic?
I don't know that it would do much good because it gets lost.
And then.
Because all the trees and, and cars parked along the street there. Because there's a sign that says no parking from here to the corner.
And they can't.
Been there for years and they don't read that, so.
And that was the excuse for them not stopping is they couldn't see the stop sign because of the trees.
Right.
So, um, may not be a bad idea, though, just in case I do get somebody that's driving faster than twenty-five and I'm like, well, it's posted right there, so maybe a second.
One northbound and one southbound.
Southbound, yeah, okay.
Could go somewhere where the.
You could, you know, you could always put a flashing yellow light on it or something to wake people up, but.
Doesn't stop the planes. People get blinded by the flashing yellow lights.
So number two becomes twenty-five mile an hour speed limit sign for southbound traffic located just north of Locust Avenue.
Yeah, I think so, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
We're asking this for south on our agenda, but.
Well, we can.
We'll come back in this one.
Okay. See how it works.
That way he can type it up correctly and.
Well, yeah, that, uh, you know, we can try and cobble this up, but if you want to have a printed one next month, we can have a printed one, do it.
Might be best.
Yeah.
I'll just get that one, I'll make a motion table.
Okay. The second one or the first one?
We're doubling everything and then we have a.
We'll come back with a print one.
Yeah, okay, yeah. I'll second, turn.
Okay, Brian.
Hi.
Hi.
Green.
Hi.
Tyler.
Hi.
Table till next month. Number ten, discussion action, changes to parking regulations on Woodland Avenue between King and Pine Street.
Uh, so I'll start off, uh, I know Chris and I, we've been looking at that and watching it pretty close, we still think it's a fairly narrow street, um, I don't know if you park vehicles on there during school hours, it'd make much, uh, room for anything else, I did talk to Walt Frederick, um, he didn't turn it down, he said it wasn't an idea. Um, he, he was pretty open to it, he would like to wait and see and walk through his yard when there's no snow to see what's going on, I said, that's no problem, that's only fair, um, the questions he had was obviously snow removal and my ability if somebody did fall, and I said, well, that's why we're working through this, I just wanted to let you know what's going on, so you didn't hear about it or read about it somewhere else, so, but he seemed, he seemed pretty open minded to it. And I didn't talk, I didn't talk.
Right. There's no sidewalk on the east block after that, so whoever's walking is gonna have to go to the street anyway. Is it worth the time and effort and money to put that sidewalk there?
Great question for you.
I'm asking you, I'm asking you.
Uh, well, it's probably the congestion point would be right there, I mean, obviously they spread off as they come this way, every block, um, you can keep it the way it is, and if you just want to switch to parking just after school and not do the sidewalk, that's a, that's definitely a cheaper option, and you can always do the cheaper option and figure out if it doesn't work, you can always change it later.
Do we put a price tag on our little kids' heads, though?
Well, that's not fair, that's not fair to say.
I know, I, I know, but, but like, not yet.
I called the li- I called the librarian, I said, do you think, Steve, this is a real problem with these kids, kind of like letting the ants out of the ant, you only go everywhere, and she didn't think that there was as many kids that do that, they don't have as many, she thinks, her idea, is that there's more computers at home, so they don't go to the library to use the computer, therefore less kids, is what she said.
Interestingly enough, day before yesterday, almost yesterday afternoon, um, the new librarian was herding the kids to the library on the highway sidewalk there, and, uh, she was in front leading them and you've got a trail of probably twenty kids this big behind her, now they all stayed in tow, which is fine, but that, is it always like that? I don't know, the roads were crappy, somebody could have slid into them, and maybe the sidewalk won't, would not, um, stop somebody from hitting a kid there, but I just, I, in, in my opinion, I just think that that's kind of a, I don't know, kind of a sticky situation right there, and maybe they haven't had any kids running around or anything like that, but I got kids on this side, I've got kids on this side.
Dr. Arnold, do you think they have safety classes in the elementary school?
Um, how to walk to the library after school?
On how to walk on.
We're just having a walk.
On how to walk anywhere, you go with the traffic, against the traffic, all that business, we don't have safety officers that do that, or are the police supposed to do that?
Oh. No. No. No, we don't have so much time in the day.
No, I'm, I'm saying, we're expecting these kids to know how to walk on a sidewalk and we don't tell them how.
Yeah.
But there isn't a sidewalk there, and, and, and the issue too is.
We want to put a sidewalk there, they want to put a sidewalk there.
The issue too is, there's a lot of parents that work out of town and this library becomes after school care, there are a lot of kids fourth grade and under that come to this library out, and you can come in here and they're all spread out, they're playing games, they're doing all kinds of things, it's not safe. You know, we, we tried the little painted thing on the street and it, we tried it, it, it's not great.
I think that's, I think you put the sidewalk in.
I'm like, if we're spending a ninety-two thousand dollars in our Keno fund, then let's use it to build a sidewalk.
I'm just saying, both sides. I'm not saying four against, I'm just saying, this is the other side, I'm not, I'm not convinced every kid's going to actually walk on that sidewalk, unless they say if you don't, you don't get to go to the library, and guess what, then we'll call your parents and they're gonna, gonna come, so then it'll be a big problem, so you know that you.
I watch kids walk in the puddle of snow off the sidewalk.
You know what, that's true, they're gonna venture, they're kids, I get that that's what they're gonna do, but they're on the off chance that sun gets in somebody's eyes, it's road slicks, something like that, but.
Given them, given them a sidewalk is better than sending them down the street.
Exactly.
Yeah. That's, that's what it comes down to.
So if we can move on, I would.
You don't want to talk about that.
So I'd, I'd like to think about, talk about if, how we're gonna, who's in charge of cleaning, maintaining it, and I, I just want to think about it again, and, I mean.
True. Gail has already, Gail Salina has already said you'll do that, I think that's admirable of him, whereas it said you're gonna dump theirs, know that they always dump right there.
That's a fantastic question.
On the street?
Yeah, when the kids aren't walking?
Well, you got lowers, they can move somewhere, it's a way to put all the snow around the school.
So, but right now, what, we, I mean, obviously we're not gonna be able to put a sidewalk in in the middle of the, so, we need to figure something out for right now.
Tell the table it's free.
Well, we got a couple ideas.
I did, well, I just had a thought, it's only a block, is there like an aide that could walk behind them, and, you know, to walk them over here and then run back to the school, since it's only a block.
After school, that is after school time.
You mean to the library?
Yeah.
They do, uh, tip, uh, Mrs. Korth goes over there and actually grabs them.
No, but I mean, an aide to walk behind them, if she's walking in front of them, you know, if there was an aide from the school that could just walk behind them, it's only a block, and then they could run back to the school.
That's after school hours, though, I think.
Do you think these kids walk in line?
I, I was just saying, it's only a block, so if they could walk, I don't.
Maybe their parents could help them walk in line. How long would these kids get to go to the library for? How lo- how long are we talking?
How long can they stay at the library?
Yeah.
Well, until it closes, if they want to.
After school, then.
Yeah.
Yeah.
These are all going to?
Uh, there's, there, the library provides an activity, so we actually have a program that, um, takes K through two, I think on Mondays, and actually does activities with them.
Well, how long does that last?
Based on five.
Depends on what's going on, so there's plenty of time right there in the day, Christie.
For what?
Christie. You could probably find some kind of crossing the street safety program video or something, and we could do that there, since they're not doing it at the school, because all their time took up every damn day, every minute of it, don't have time in the whole year to do one.
Not a bad idea.
Christie could organize one of them, we could take fifteen, twenty, thirty minutes, well, there at the library, there we go, there's something done.
That's not a bad idea, come to the library and do that.
Not at all. And send these kids' parents something that says, hey, we are really having an issue, we're keeping your kid in line.
So what do you have?
He's just saying that, that'd be a good bumper seat.
I know, but when you're asking on this motion.
Told my parents I wasn't walking in line. I can't believe that every minute, you ain't got enough time in the day.
Yeah, just take what, till we can, you know, talk the law.
Because the school doesn't say that you gotta, you ain't got time, that's just the same.
If, if we can walk around.
I think, I think we put a lot of expectations on the school, I'm a former teacher.
Well, absolutely.
And we can't do it, but they can't do it.
Conversation's been tabled.
Okay.
Go then.
Okay, number eleven.
The parking.
Discussion.
Ooh, uh, did you want to change the parking regulation or not just that?
That's where.
That's what, that's what.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's.
Because right now it's no parking at any time, yeah.
Oh, no parking at any time, so, are you thinking of changing it to parking after five?
Yeah.
So that we have parking for school activities, is that what it is?
Well, I believe the Masonic laws is the first one that approached us.
Yeah, I thought, yeah, I thought it.
What time does it eastern start, have their meeting?
It's at night.
Six thirty, so we say.
You want to make sure all those schools, like, kids are gone.
So we're ordering, we got no parking signs now, later.
Correct there, yes.
So then we make this motion, and then we put no parking after.
No parking during school hours.
During school hours.
School hours, and then we leave them signs up after the sidewalks.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I think so, because it gets pretty tight.
Because on the street, uh, that's King Street, um, they have those signs that say no parking between eight and five, and that's for the school kids to not park there, so.
Okay, I just make sure we're not just, one time and then, month and a half later, we get a nice spring and.
Yeah, no. Not. Yeah, well, the ones on the, on the north side are here, no parking during school hours, so we look on the.
Don't worry.
Maybe you can wait.
Was that?
Yeah, it is during, no, okay.
Yeah, so on the north side, it says no parking during school hours.
Yeah, that's what I thought, so.
So on the south side is what we're talking, so we just, no parking between eight and five, Monday through Friday.
Oh, and, yeah, because we could open it up on the weekends for parking.
Correct, yeah.
Wrestling, yeah.
Yeah, because we have wrestling and basketball, you know, and then.
Correct, so just no parking eight to five, or do you want it seven thirty to five? Because kids are walking to school, correct? So if we say either seven or seven thirty until five.
Drop off and pick off the bus.
So from seven to five, Monday through Friday, no parking.
Yeah.
So no parking in the summer, too, which I don't think it'd make a difference.
So Bruce, would you?
So if you want the school hours.
Like that.
That's what I've written in line number one, we can reprint.
Okay.
Clean it up.
So if, if you want to, sorry, if you want to do school hours, then you'd be able to park there in the summer. So that's, it's a question you guys that, you like to make a decision on, if you go eight to five, Monday through Friday, that means July on Tuesday.
Or every, yeah.
While school.
No, you just put either or, it's not a.
While, while school is in session.
Perfect.
Yeah, that, that's what's on the north side, that's why I'm asking, you guys have it either way, but those are your.
But school is not in session between seven and eight o'clock in the morning and three thirty and five o'clock at night.
It's true, but I would doubt anybody parked there, but you're right there, yeah.
So if somebody wanted to, it would be a jerk, maybe that's what we're doing.
On school days, then, not in session, on school days.
I'm just saying.
That's, that's a good point.
What are the ones on the north side specifically?
No parking.
During school, what, during school hours.
Because it's, this is school hours, or is there actual time on it?
Dare you drive by there every day? So I do, I still don't remember.
On the north side there?
School hours, I believe it says.
School hours.
On school days.
I guess we could do, no parking, what, at seven to five on school days?
When school's in session.
When school's in session.
Sounds great.
That sound good, seven to five, on school days.
You can put it if you want on a sign.
I can put whatever on a sign, all day. All right, so do we need to make a motion here?
Yes.
To.
Bring it back to next meeting.
Bring it back to next meeting?
Print it out.
Okay, print it out, okay, there's my motion, we're bringing it back next meeting, print it out.
I'll second that, whatever that was.
Jody. Hi.
Brian.
Hi.
Okay. Okay, now, number eleven, discussion action, approval of agreement, City of Plainview and Plainview Brunswick Community Foundation, construction of community center on land purchase from Norda Johnson.
Now, this is much like the resolution, Bruce, write this up, read our minds, decide what we're going to do.
You've done this long enough, you should be able to do it.
So. So, Jim, you got a copy?
Yeah, I don't have it, no.
It was, it's actually supposed to name a.
I have to stand up and everything, thank you. Thank you.
The deed obtained from Norda Johnson requires some negotiation on the question of, she wanted to be sure that Plainview would allow, would see to it that the community foundation could use this property for, uh, building. And Norda has been somewhat touchy about city activities ever since the paving assessment went against her north lots. So she wanted that in the deed, and we put it in the deed, I, I don't know if you've seen the deed lately, but the deed has a little phrase at the bottom of it, subject to the condition that the city of Plainview will allow the community foundation to build on this property, however much of it they need essentially. Now, there was discussion with her that we want to be really, really sure about this, couldn't we write it down in an agreement? So this is really as much as anything, just to make Norda comfortable, but it wouldn't hurt to have something written down anyway. And I just made this up out of thin air earlier today, hold the entire property until the community foundation has completed final plans and specifications for the complex, including construction, parking, and other necessary or useful space. I mean, it gives P V C F discretion to use as much as is reasonably necessary. And then once that has been chosen and designated, P V C F would notify the city, okay, that's what we need, and that would release the rest of it, I would think we need to make it clear that at some point, you release the rest of it. But, you know, this might be two or three years down the road, or worse, we don't know, so in the meantime, it says just maintain it in a similar condition to which it was received. It's an alfalfa field, that's probably a pretty good way to leave it in the meantime, and take care of it and keep it weed-free, sort of, and, well, the alfalfa. So that would seem to do it, unless you want to say something else.
I have one. Paragraph two, the last sentence there says to be constructed by P V C F, the city actually has to construct the building.
Well, you know.
I don't know how technical you got to get.
Well, I almost took that off because I wasn't positive, I was making it up at the time.
Yeah.
Um, shall we just take out the words by P C B F, constructed and operated by city?
Yeah.
Take out by P C B F, I mean, the actual format of how that's going to happen is somewhat uncertain yet, but I hated to say anything at all, I almost took out the whole phrase.
Right.
But if we take out by P C B F, it'll say constructed and operated by the city, and it's going to be on the same basis that the foundation has to come up with most of the money somehow, okay, so strike those two words. I can easily reprint if you want to pass it that way and get it down.
She understands that.
What is, what's that?
Norda, understand, is she gonna be okay with that?
Well, I read her mind.
She has to be, the P V C cannot, there is no other choice.
Well, I know she has to be either.
I read her mind in the same way that I read yours. Did you feel it happen? I don't know. Well, Jim, talk to her.
Yeah, Jeremy had given us a verbal, the P, P V C F. Verbal commitment, the, yes, the council, and so he's speaking in your behalf, would not do anything with the rest of the lots, which we bought about ten acres, and would probably only need about two and a half to three lots, uh, excuse me, blocks. So, so, less than half of what probably is going to be needed, and we want the area, which is probably directly west of the baseball fields. So it's close for parking and to be used by the rest of the city and school.
School, yeah.
And anyway, and she's very much in favor, I said this, anything to better, to, to do the betterment of Plainview, uh, but she has some animosity about dealing with the city and the council.
Right.
Because of the pavement, uh, that's very, very plain, so when I gave her the final five hundred dollars, uh, to clinch this option, she asked, well, do you have that in writing? She just doesn't trust you.
No, I know, that's why I asked, I'm okay with that.
I have it from Jeremy, and I guess that's only true, if some of you as council are no longer here in three years, then we're dealing with new people.
Right.
And so if it's agreement like this, then, then you know what it is.
And we stated that before we accepted the P V C S money, that you guys had the rights to everything first.
Yep, right.
And agreement by the deed anyway, but this just makes it a little more clear.
Yeah.
This is comforting, it's, it's a spender.
Well, and I've got, I mean, one question, I don't know if this pertains to that, but we talked about that first half, so the school could also use it for overflow parking for games and such.
Right.
Does that mean that the school couldn't use it until this is, project is done, or can they have that corner now, so that can be utilized while, because this could be a three to five year project?
It can't be used until P V C F picks their spot.
Do you think Norda felt that way?
Well, you can't do it another way, you gotta pick your spot, the way the foundation wants it.
Well, a dirt parking lot is a dirt parking lot.
We went through four purchases, four or five purchase agreements, so I'm not guessing anything, what she.
Yeah, see, but we did, we went through four or five.
And we just seem ashamed, and, and we know where we want it, it's going to be three to five years, if we're lucky, really, can't use that corner for parking?
We went along this, but in hindsight, you've been this far along for that many years, what's another three years waiting?
Right, or what would it hurt to run this, taking that out by her, again?
How about no?
I just want, I just wanted to clarify, so we, so nothing, no portion of it can be used until the, like.
I would say no.
Yeah.
On that hand, you can keep a park where they don't roll one turn, I bet Chris is not going to give them a ticket if they park on that corner.
Well.
Are you?
I'm sorry.
What? I'd be ticketing everybody in town, that would case, towing everybody, and I don't think that'd go over too well.
And eventually, I think, that I, let Dr. Arnold speak on this behalf, that the school or the softball fields, the ball programs are looking at doing something west of the current softball fields, baseball fields, or practice fields up in there.
And Susan, the deal doesn't, the thing doesn't say built, it says designated.
Right.
Well, we know what part we want.
Well, we don't know what part we want, I mean, that needs some study, but, yeah, all you gotta do is designate it, and then you could free some of it up.
Yeah, but we, we're waiting. Yeah. Right, yeah, the architect, he's getting out there and saying, this is the size we need.
As long as the plans are there and the space is designated.
And the building may be changing also, from where it is.
That's the thing, the building may be changing from a two-story to, you know, everything on one of those.
Yeah, you don't know what level. And then it's for the yet, I don't think we can say what it is today.
No, no.
Um.
So those were her wishes, and, and she's happy with that, but she just said, get it in writing, and I said, okay, she was a cry.
Well, it says in the completion of any survey or plat, so we just really just have a site study that we could use that.
Yeah.
Something to mark out the boundaries that P C B F is, or P V C F is.
For the parking lot in the building.
Really comfortable with this, this is it.
Right.
And then the rest can free up, I don't, I threw in the word survey or plat, I mean, somehow, you gotta get out there and put something on the ground, to mark it.
I think you did, you handled it well, Bruce, I think that's realistic.
Any more discussion? I prefer a motion then to approve. Prefer a motion then to approve the agreement?
I'll move that we approve the agreement as written, with the words by PBCF on paragraph two scratched out.
Second. I'll second that motion. Brian?
Aye.
Jody?
Aye.
Prey?
Aye.
Tyler?
Aye.
Thank you.
Yes, and thank you for working with us on this. Uh, it's very cumbersome, we're donating ten acres worth, and we'll be using two and a half, three blocks.
Oh, we'll be watching.
Okay, number twelve.
We hope it's successful.
It will be.
Number twelve, discussion action, updates on installation of lights on for flag poles.
Um, we did purchase a commercial light for the east end, it is installed, it does need some adjusting, but they do shine up. Nothing else has changed otherwise.
As far as I know, that's all we're concerned about, as far as what we're responsible for. Any discussion from the council?
I've got something I'd like to say about the flags and lights. You say, you say you put a pole up and stuff, east?
No.
No? So you took two flags down?
Yep.
I was curious where they went to, where they restored them. Where they at?
Wherever the guys put them at.
I'd like to see them. Is that possible?
The rest will show you flags?
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just curious, I just wanted to see where you stored them at, and where they were sitting, if y'all didn't mind. You know, I think I might have found a light for the flagpole in the park. I hadn't seen it, I, even if I did, I wouldn't know if it was, what was needed, but I was talking to these fellows about it, and they all looked at one another, and they said, well, I do believe there's a light on the shelf back there. And they went and looked, and they said, there's a light back there, it's been around a long time, it'd been used for nothing, and they think it was bought back when Jake was here. I don't know who Jake would be, but uh, I don't know if those fellows, they, so they don't know what else it might be for. And, but the, I'll bet MPPD be led to swing by and take a look. You know where it was sitting at, it was in the city shop on the shelf. If I got bought, maybe even to replace the light that was being replaced. Well, that'd be.
Something we can look into, I guess.
That'd be cool. I'll bet them folk, fellows would know if it would work or not.
We still have to ask the Legion, like, we said at the last meeting, cause it's their flag.
It's their pole? Well, I don't think they, well, so, you gonna ask them if it's okay to shine a light on? Yeah, you do that.
Okay, do we need any actions?
That's what we're gonna sense it out, we're doing.
No, but you're happy to wait, we're operating, we're good.
So there are discussions.
I'll, I, I still have questions about what you're gonna do. What's, what's going on with the lights at the flagpole at the city office?
Number thirteen.
What's going on with the lights at the flags outside of town?
Discussion action, approval of special use permit for development of a dollar general.
No, the right to speak, I guess it doesn't say anything, you gotta answer.
Bruce?
What?
This is agenda item number thirteen, has been the subject of quite a little stir in the last couple days. The people from Omaha absolutely positively wanted a Zoom meeting and a court reporter if there was gonna be a decision here tonight. Mark had expressed the opinion that we needed to do up a more detailed motion and have a chance to consider the various findings in the special use permit before anything was passed. And he had talked with this gal from Omaha about continuing this meeting to the seventh of February to have a final vote on this topic. She was okay with that, Mark was okay with that, mayor was basically okay with that. Uh, we had to tell him something, so today, Mark told him, he was quite sure the meeting would be continued to the seventh of February. So if at all possible, I think the only action here should be a motion to go ahead and continue the final decision on the special use permit to the seventh of February. And in the meantime, we would work on the details of a well-done, detailed motion, if we can come up with one, that would be tolerable for everybody, based on the findings necessary in the special use permit. And then the ultimate, and with all these findings, we vote yes or no, I mean, that's your decision that night. But we would like to have the format pretty well done, if at all possible.
Can we discuss that with you before?
As it sits, what?
Can we discuss that with you before the meeting?
Yes.
In some sort of way?
It would be my intention, in fact, to probably ask one at a time, the various council people, is there any certain findings you'd like to include here? And I will try to do the mind reading thing and come up with a meaningful motion that will work for everybody. And it's still subject to discussion, but only after we've gone through some effort to get it well done, if at all. So we really do, since we've assured the Omaha people, need to take a motion to put off this decision-making and any further discussion to that seventh of February.
So in uh, February seventh, is that written in stone yet, Bruce, or there's still arrangements to be made?
They have agreed, Mark has agreed, I've told them it's okay. I think we talked with the city office about it, but we didn't ever pin anything down. Uh, it's not in stone, no.
Okay, I was just wondering, 'cause I don't know if the council knew about it yet, so.
It's in the week, it's February seventh, or Tuesday?
It is your meeting.
No, it's not, our meeting's on.
No, that's ahead of the meeting. The meeting is on Valentine's Day.
So it's at six o'clock then, or?
Well, that's the decision to be made here.
Okay.
And if you wanna announce the certain date right now, that's fine, or whatever, but it would be best if we get it as clear as possible and try and stick with it.
Is the court reporter up for the seventh?
Mark has got the court reporter on the book for the seventh, at the, at the present time. I mean, that's a long ways out.
Putting the council people on the spot, if they know that you're doing it on the seventh or not.
Do they wanna be Zoomed in, or they gonna be here in person, do you know?
I think we would have to talk with them about that. Probably, they're counting on it being a fairly short meeting and not much public input, it's just a little discussion amongst the council and a vote of some kind. So I think they would be looking for Zoom or something like that.
I have no problem with the seventh.
I would rather wait till the seventh, I have a couple other issues I wanna investigate before I, I would not be ready for a vote tonight anyway.
Sounds like the seventh should probably work then, Bruce.
Okay, I'll make a.
Seven, what time is thirty one?
Oh, um.
I moved six thirty.
Six thirty. So, uh, I make a motion to move the special use permit discussion action for February seventh at six thirty PM.
Second.
I'll second.
Okay, Brian?
Aye.
Jody?
Aye.
Prey?
Aye.
Tyler?
Aye.
Good. Move to the seventh of February. Okay, down to number fourteen, council comments.
I wanted to say that our library received a five-star rating. I thought that was great, this is not the first time they've done that. We know we have a nice library, it's just nice to see it written. Maybe we can have an article on that.
Who, uh, who gives any ratings, Karin? The state does that?
I'd glad to see they're getting some money, some money. I am glad to see if they're getting some money from, that they got some money from the Cooper Grant from the Vito's Bank and uh, for the Youth for Excellence Grant, four hundred and fifty dollars, so, you know, they're doing well.
So, Prey, anything? All right, motion to adjourn?
Well, I had things I would want to speak about, if you didn't mind, because, you know, the open meetings act says that the person has the right to speak in public meetings. It says you don't have to let me speak at every, it says you gotta let the students speak, it gives you like, adjourn. I mean, I wanna point out the fact that y'all didn't get any rules about letting anybody speak, or what they speak about. You go up to the office to have something put on the agenda to speak about, and they tell you no.